Monday, September 27. This is a joint committee meeting between the Finance and General Government Committee of the Town Council and the Infrastructure and Public Works Committee, along with the Board of Finance members, who are speaking on behalf of the ARPA funds. Rich, do you take attendance, or is that on trial?
Tucker, do I take separate attendance for Board of Finance's speech?
Okay.
You go first.
Yeah, sure. Mark? Mark Jimsky here. Rich? I have it right here. We'll go through our... Alrighty. Mark Jimsky here. Rich Townsend here. Robin Bates-Mason. Maria Nott. Christina Ross.
Yeah.
Henia.
Yeah.
Any on the infrastructure side? Tom Butterworth. Liz Donovan. Smed Anwen. Here.
Hi, from Board of Finance, so I don't know tomorrow.
Mike Moore. Present, but not on those committees.
Hi, from Board of Finance. There's Amy Workis here, and we're going to start in one minute. And Michael Chen is not in work. In the Board of Finance. Take me out of this consideration.
So, the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the ARPA funds, and I think it'd be appropriate to kind of talk about the timeline and looking back. Obviously, there's roughly $5.2 million of funding coming to the town. In July, the Chamber of Commerce, TDAC, and the Community Foundation cosponsored a forum. In August, the Board of Finance and the Town Council designated members to take up the ARPA discussion, and here we are. September 21st, the Board of Selectment discussed and put forth a preliminary matrix with various allocations for all sorts of projects, community organizations, et cetera. In October, the Board of Finance will review, and the Town Council likely go to a special meeting, so residents can weigh in. And then, hopefully, Kevin, if I'm correct, in late October, early November, we should have a framework for that funding.
I'll join you. I'm ex officio on your committee as well. So, our auditors have advised that we should follow the budget process, which means we have to follow a special appropriation process. So, either the Board of Selectment or the Board of Finance can initiate a special appropriation. So, you know, we've got to decide what, how we're going to go about initiating a special appropriation.
Just a point of clarification. So, I'm trying to really understand where the ultimate decision will be processed.
Well, special appropriation is a request, and it starts with the Board of Selectment. I think right now, you know, just given the work that Board of Selectmen is doing, that we would initiate it like we did with the budget, and then Board of Finance would function on it and recommend something to the Town Council. And the Town Council then can decide to decrease amounts, but not increase. I mean, our budget, our budget process doesn't allow for increases by the Town Council. That's why this process of getting input is an informal way of giving the Town Council.
So, it follows the same system of budget, starting with Selectmen, going to Board of Finance, Town Council, which is a little different than I understood. I understood that it really was fundamentally kind of on legislative bodies' decision.
Well, that's when the auditor said you really should follow your budget process under your charter. Especially for capital projects, which have to be authorized and recommended, so.
So, I think the first agenda item would be to discuss parameters that the group would like to put forth. It's an open discussion. Just Amy and I were chatting, and just to start the conversation, an example of a parameter that we had talked about was that the ARPA funding should not be, should be non-recurring and lead to further budgetary support. Just to give another parameter for discussion, infrastructure projects should benefit all residents. Perhaps another one could be money should not assist needs the community usually supported through taxation. That's upward discussion. Just, I put all this together, I can keep going, but, you know, there was, at the print, as an example, during the Board of Selectmen meeting, a discussion around whether or not money should go into the general fund. Should talk about that as well. Amy, do you have any?
Sure, sure. I believe, if I'm getting the notes correctly on ARPA, is the elderly uses respond to COVID-19, public health emergency, or make it impacts, which if we have lost revenues, that's completely values to put in. To respond to workers performing essential work, bringing pay or funds. For provision of government services, to the extent of reduction of revenues resulted from COVID. And to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband, etc. So, it's pretty broad. It's intentionally, it's not supposed to use to directly reduce taxes. And that is completely prohibited in terms of saying, I'm going to reduce my mill rate by that group. That being said, I think, you may, there's audit, you have to audit how this money is spent, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the very cleanest way we can make sure that we are complying is to the extent we have lost revenues, and the funds can be directed to lost revenues. Obviously, they're going to general fund, but that just has to sit there. But that way, you're definitely complying, and so it's like 3.1 million, Linda. So, we know the 3.1, then it can be deployed for all. So, I think that is, I think, a wise approach to just in terms of the audit trail, which doesn't mean it sits in the general, but I'm just saying. From talking with Maria, and with Chen and other folks on the Board of Finance, we definitely incur, I mean, this is a one-time thing. We're never going to see something like this again. So, to the extent that we deploy the resources, it should be for a one-time expense. We don't want to be, we don't feel we're investing something that then is going to have incurring expenses going forward, because we're not going to get the incurring revenue directly associated with it. We also feel that, again, to incent you during capital projects, really, I think we should think about hoping for benefits of certainly safety, health and safety, meal pay. I get very worried about picking winners and losers. Certain organizations get money in certain, though, in certain extent of everything. Make sure that the whole community says, wow, we deployed this $6 million to benefit everybody. And personally, you have to say, three years from now, and look back and say, we did a really good job with that. You know, we have, from our perspective, the Board of Finance, and a lot of attention, we have a lot of big capital projects. Police departments, certainly health and safety. We have a library coming forward that has an associated unfunded mandate. Insurance lab, working to address PNC's additional requirements, perhaps, to deploy the money for. There's a whole host of really worthy purposes, but we have a lot of capital expenses. We can, we have things ADA devices. We can fund stuff that's in our capital plan. And I also think, in general, the capital stuff we funded, it should be stuff that's already on the radar screen. I don't think we should have people jumping ahead of queue, just because somebody's excited about it today, I think we. And we have a process, this stuff is in the capital plan, and it's by your plan, and we're going to put it in there. Maria, do you want to add? So, that's probably about the capital plan, for projects that are coming up, that we're going to have to fund, especially health and safety. One project that I thought we funded, we put in the budget for next year, is an tiger, I may have the term put wrong, but it's a mobile generator, that I think is at $20,000. It's going to be able to do all the buildings in the hardware, to move around. And I know that people have talked about capital needs at the Y for a generator, because it's a potentially a shelter for everybody. So, I think our vice is to see what's used, if we can, for the hard capital things we have to do going forward. Given that it's our purpose.
I don't know, one of the things is that it's, seemingly, this is supposed to focus on being economic, economics running, and/or if, kind of. One of its, is, yeah, are we focusing on a lot of different segments of time, from this, as well? So, we have to focus on all the different, all different types of businesses down, as well as the government, as well as profits. And I know we're talking about subcontract, profits, but, you know, it's, but, I like to understand what the priority is.
Yeah, I mean, that was put out by the Select. So, that's just one of the weird things. I'm not sure if we're pleased with that sort of use of funds, right? Because, again, my concern is, I don't want to pick winners and losers.
You know, if you're a nonprofit, you do great stuff, but that's like your passion, right? And there's a lot of them, and they do great stuff, but it's not necessarily everybody's passion. And so, it's a hard decision to, and what are you funding with that? I mean, you're funding just, is it an offsetting operating expense? Or, you know, it's a one-time thing? You don't want to, you know, nonprofits raise money, right? And they raise money to support their mission. Right? So, is that a good use of these funds? I don't know.
Well, I think, I mean, it's nice to say we don't, we don't want to pick winners and losers, but the disease pick winners and losers. There are specific segments of society that were really hit worse, and specific segments of the town that really hit worse. Some of those have been offset by stuff like the PPP, where they can pay their employees, et cetera. But the question is, who needs to get money to get them going again if they're not going? And so, it's that evaluation of what, if you kind of take where they were in 2019, what does it take to get them back to being where they were in 2019? And if they're already written there, they probably don't need it. But, you know, what, if they failed, and they're not there, and they still have a mission, then I think it's worth, it's worth funding. I think this is one of the critical, one of the critical things. You know, the New Canaan Community Foundation typically, when they fund stuff, it is not funded as ongoing projects. It's funded as a catalyst project for the nonprofit to start something new, a new project that is then going to be self-funding within a year or two. I mean, for that reason, I think that New Canaan Community Foundation is very good at this, and they're very good at looking at the nonprofits. Yet, the other thing the Community Foundation needs to, needs to consider is, is this restricted to the town? Which I'm sure we all would say, sure, of course, it's restricted to the town. The Community Foundation is not restricted to the town when they give money away.
I was just going to say, Community Foundation is not necessarily restricted to the town. There may be some people from the town who participate in the program, but it is not solely, you know, New Canaan. And I don't think that all of their projects are, what I'm going to say, startups. I think some of them are ongoing, year after year after year.
That's a, that's a, that's a continual debate in the grant-making process, whether it really is ongoing. You know, I mean, they typically give money to the library every year, right? And is it, are they giving it just to the library, or is it a project that they came up with, something that will, that will hopefully, you know, provide growth, et cetera? Is it always that way? Of course not. It's not always that way. The other thing the Community Foundation did was they, they opened a fund for the coronavirus problem. And so, they, they've already gone through the grant-making process for, and I don't know how they did it, because I just contributed to it, I don't have any idea how they actually divided the money up, but I think they raised actually quite a bit of money and gave it away under the auspices of the Community Foundation itself.
Well, I mean, I think you raise a good, I think.
I think we just ought to tell them what, what the parameters that we're hoping they're going to use, or understand the parameters they want to use. I mean, maybe that's the way to do it differently. How are you going to do this, so that we understand where it's going, and is that consistent with exactly the parameters that we're talking about right now?
I don't, I realize, I don't think we can, can tell the Community Foundation if we grant a million dollars.
Yeah, rather than, sure.
I mean, but line item by line, okay, okay.
Well, I, that shot, I was on the board, if you were, but there's a grant-making process as well. People go out every year, visit their, every grantee, like they know the year, every year, there's 60 or 70 grantees every year, and they, they usually do that, they give grants to a nonprofit that doesn't have an impact on the parents or the services that are provided outside of the county, county residents. We want those services to be provided, so that's why they give a grant to take prices for, and various.
I know, that's what I said, that some portion of the community.
As you said, I think they raised over a million dollars, and they, they gave away quite a bit of money for COVID, during the crisis. They know, they know who has received PPP, because they look at their financials and they make a decision what they're trying to accomplish. There were some nonprofits that were really banged around with COVID, not being able to have an annual fundraiser, and so that's, but they have the expertise. We, we don't have the expertise or the ability to time to do what they do. It's an amazing process, and I think everybody's never stepped on the board and understands.
I agree with you. I'm only bringing you up, I think we all understand what their, what their, their parameters are on which they're going to, they're going to bring stuff in. What are they looking for?
Those nonprofits that were impacted by COVID and didn't otherwise already get relief from PPP. You kind of have employees, a lot of nonprofits don't have employees.
Well, have we decided that, that we wanted, want to have some of the funds, you know, designated to the Community Foundation to make decisions, or, I mean?
I think it's just an option on the table. No, I think it's just an option on, I think right now it's option.
Okay, I was kind of getting that, you know, are we telling them?
Right.
As if it's a decided category.
Their grant process begins in fall, and continues right, but they get, like, every March, so they get, you know, so I think, you know, if we make a decision by November, they will leave it to the process. They, we may say, you know, up to a certain amount, and they say, well, we can't find these for all this time.
So, Kevin?
Lauren Patterson.
You think?
I think so.
Engage with this and with their board.
This is just a little different, because we're effectively subcontracting, you can't make the foundation do this for us, which I think is a great idea. It's a little different.
Other towns are looking at community needs as much as they're looking at their government. And I think that's, and that's the legislation, also, you know, human impact.
Exactly.
And nonprofits have asked for assistance, because, you know, some towns have decided a percentage of the money should go to nonprofits.
Are any towns having money specifically to individual citizens?
So, that's a.
I, I think, yeah.
Discussion that we had.
Obviously, cities are different than now, and our needs.
I mean, should, should there be one-time bonuses to essential workers, et cetera? I mean, you and I.
Yeah, I mean, look, there are people who worked unbelievably hard, I mean, during COVID, while the rest of us, I'm not saying we didn't work hard, but you were, you helped by staying home, right?
Correct.
I mean, if you were stayed out, you, you were not the problem, you stayed home. But, I mean, we had a lot of the people in this town who put in probably above and beyond, you know, and, and that is one, that is one specific objective or option put forth is, you know, potentially, you know, as a premium grant or something. I mean, you know, I didn't have to go out, you know, I didn't, you know, I didn't have to go to the police department, I didn't have to work home as a teacher, teaching my kids who are at home, or, or my kids are at home and I have to go to New Canaan. So, I mean, I think that, that is certainly a one-time thing, it's kind of like a one-time, thank you for all the effort people did. You know, that's, you don't get to do that often, right?
Who's figuring that piece out?
Figuring what piece out?
The, well, it's up the Board of Finance, they have to, but they're to come up with some sort of numbers.
Yeah, you.
Qualify the individuals and put a dollar, dollar figure on that.
So, but, you know, so that, that could be, and in some ways, it's, you know, I mean, it's, it's not the community fund who's giving to a nonprofit, but it is kind of a direct COVID subsidy to people who really worked really hard.
Yeah, are those, are those people defined by, by being government-employed?
Yeah.
So, it would only be government-employed, it wouldn't be other people that.
There's a, there's a litmus, there's a litmus test in the, in the legislation that goes through what defines the individual.
Yeah.
It's legal language that, but it's there.
I think it would, it would be, I think you would talk to department heads and have them identify people, you talk to people at school.
So, Kevin, during the Board of Selectmen meeting last week, there was a discussion about funding the general fund, or putting some money aside for lost revenue into the general fund. Well, first off, what's everyone's view on that? And what was, what was your, what's your view on that?
We didn't have a net loss, right?
Correct.
Over the town. We were very fortunate not to have that. Other, other cities, we now got lax, and didn't have the, you know, certainly, that's legitimate. That was one base for claiming it, but the reality, if we can spend all the money, or we want it, we don't need, look at that as a basis for it. But, again, I, I think some of the Town Council have a view about the public general fund this, others, you know, my own view is probably not more in camp of bringing the general fund out, so we're not adding to it.
Yeah. So, so everyone, I mean, so the town understands, we have lost revenue, but it was more than offset. And I think your point is, and I think others, is that maybe we don't need to put money into the general fund, because it's well-funded.
Right, certainly, that's certainly my opinion, I've got this in opinion, I think the general fund is well-funded. And I think it's time to, and unfortunately, you can't give it back to the taxpayers through this.
Right.
Right? And so, it's uncertain, actually, to stick it in the general fund, what happens?
Well, I, I think what could happen, okay? And yes, the general fund is up, okay? No one knew what was going to happen with COVID, right? We approached everything conservatively, and the general fund, we got money, and never thought we would get, we got, I believe it was conveyance fees that gave us. It, it did, right? Okay, but that, no one knew. So, we approached conservatively, which I think makes sense. And, you know, you want to have a strong general fund, starting at 10% of expenses, which would be $15 million. And, Linda, correct me if I'm wrong in this one, there's also the assigned portion of the general fund, is that having to do with our loss? The, the healthcare guarantee, is, I think it was seven, or in the last budget, it was $7 million, I think maybe $9. So, if you have the 15, you also have on top of that an assigned, correct? So, that. Yeah. Right, so it's cash, but it's not.
Right.
So, if I just, so we're up a little bit in the general fund, okay? We also have a lot of big capital projects, right? So, if we have the general fund balance, as opposed to bonding the $10 million for the library, or whatever the number is going to be, the police department, we can deploy those funds to pay on a current basis, so we bond a lot less. Bring in the general fund lower than the high level of this now. It's, there's no goal to have this big chunk of money doing nothing. I think we were in an unusual situation, right? So, you know, you do need, you know, to have your 10% reserve, which is important for the rating agencies, it's not, I mean, I look at this stuff all the time, it's not an outrageous number in terms of reserve. And then, we have a committed amount to it, I think it's nine, seven to nine million. So, that gets you to 23 to 25 on the general fund. And realize, for the last, since I've been in the Board of Finance, every single year, we have a line item in the budget, contribution from the general fund, as we're working to get to our mill rate, which has ranged, at least in the budget, it's generally four, it went up to eight, it tends to come in lower than that. But, so you have your general fund, say, 23 to 24, if you want to have funds as a cushion for your next year's budget, to kind of keep your mill rate down, it's, it's less high a number, if you look at it like that. Now, we're a little bit higher now, but, you know, we can use that money. I mean, we have, I don't know, we have a library for $10 million, people are supportive of it, they have an unfunded mandate on that. Somehow, there's got to be a way to figure that out. Possibly, the money can be that way, you know, so.
But is it? Unfunded mandate, you're, you're saying it's not going to be $10 million, it's going to be more than $10 million.
Because however the PNC is resolved.
Trying to understand, trying to make sure everybody's.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
We committed to $10 million bucks, but we, everybody knows there's going to be another P2.
Exactly. We don't know what it is.
So, you're talking about the other piece, not the $10 million?
Exactly, exactly. Oh, yeah, you know, or both of them, right? You know, so.
But I guess there's an argument could be made that the spirit of the legislation is not to put it back into the general fund and.
Not to squirrel it away, but I, but I think what Amy's saying is different than that.
Yeah, the goal isn't to squirrel.
No, no, I, I understand, but I'm.
It's a storehouse to put it into and take it away. The question is, once we get a year, two years out, are we, are we, are, you know, are we all of a sudden going to have, you know, the general fund's not $20, $20 million overfunded, it's 30, as it is, 33, right?
No, I don't, I think there's no risk of that.
But Amy.
It's just, I mean, that would be silly.
If we have, if we have a project where PNC demands that X, Y, Z be done, I think it would be more beneficial to, to estimate a number that we're comfortable with and set it aside for that project.
That's fine, too.
Rather than say we're putting in the general fund, which then can be decided to be spent in different ways. I think that earmarking, earmarking it is more important, because then we know, and the public knows, where the money's going.
I think, I think that's great.
I think that's.
And I do think we want to go back three years from now and say, wow, we got this unexpected windfall, and remember what we did with it.
Yeah.
We don't want to, I just like, it just kind of went, you know, I think we should do something with it.
I agree, I think Christina's right, though, it needs to be earmarked, so that we know ahead of time, because I don't, I don't agree just putting money into the general fund blindly is, is, I wouldn't be in favor of that, but if it were earmarked, then I would.
Can you do that, Linda? Can we earmark within the general fund? I guess it would be assigned, right? Yeah. Just like we do with the insurance. Yeah. That works. But i- if you look at the balance sheet, it does have a number.
Because then it would, for me, meet the spirit of the legislation, which is, hey, are we truly funding infrastructure and kick-starting the economy again? To Kevin's point, a lot of other communities are hurting a lot more, so for that money not to earmark would, would kind of not be in the spirit of the legislation, in my opinion, but.
And like, every town's doing it 100% different, right? You know, so like Sanford used every penny to improve the schools, they had a lot of infrastructure.
Yeah.
So, you said, boom, you got it, got them ahead of the game, which is a direct benefit to everybody, right? So.
I, I just think, in my opinion, that we need to make the biggest impact with that money, and that everybody should know exactly where it's going from getting.
Agreed.
I'm just, you know, just picking up little, you know, tidbits of information here and there. I'm a little uncomfortable with everybody, not everybody, with the numbers of people who are thinking, oh, there's this money out there, and okay, so I'll take a $50,000 here, or I'll take a $10,000 there, or I'd like $100,000 a year, that it's like this, you know, almost monopoly money, you know, where everybody's just, you know, it's going to get their little equitable fair share. But, but in, at the end of three years, can, can you look back for those kinds of projects and say, those things really made a difference in the economy? You know, of the town, or in the operation of government, or, you know, the effect on how many people in the community. It's not onesies, twosies, it's.
Right.
You know, big impactful things.
And the next agenda item is, is to go through the, the matrix that the Board of Selectmen put out, which hopefully gives some framework to what they're thinking about. And it's, correct, and I don't think it's a one-v-two, I think it's, it's certainly, I hear from Kevin, but it's, it's an interesting list, and I, I don't think, or at least this is my viewpoint, I think Rich touched on this, that we should be, you know, looking at those line items, we're not the experts. We should set parameters and say, hey, a million dollars should go to, and these are, these are just numbers for the sake of numbers, to infrastructure, specific projects, you know, $2 million should go to the community in various forms, whether it be the YMCA or WAVE, Life Care, I don't know. And then, another portion should go to business and government, promote business in town, fund the government, lost revenue, if you want to call it that, or whatnot. But, I mean, there are different buckets, we can frame it any way we want, but I would like to put, ultimately, I think we do, otherwise, we're just going to do what we normally do in the Town Council, and get a budget and say.
Onesies, twosies.
Okay, here it is, but.
Yeah, so I, so it's up to. Yeah. So I, so it, it's up to us to be making those recommendations as to what the parameters are.
I, I, I hope so. I think that.
Okay. So I think that's kind of maybe our starting point.
Correct. That's why it's the number one. That's the agenda. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and piggybacking off what Penny said, and this is my concern, Rich, with, with the, the undefined big number going to propose, we'll look through these later, to the, uh, community foundation. Yeah. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm not sure you're going to be able to say, wow, you know, we did this. And, and I will say, I mean, look at the nonprofits in this town are amazing. They make the town really rich and vibrant, right? But you know, nonprofits are typically, you know, people run them. They, they're, they're passions. They're what really drives them and that's terrific, but what drives me may not drive you, you know, and so when you get this, this, this kind of bit of manna from heaven, you know, my, my, my concern is that it's most it, it's deployed in such a way that it benefits to most possible, most of the people in the town.
But that's why, that's exactly why I think we need to be careful with the community foundation.
I, I, yeah.
That's really all I'm saying.
Okay. I, I'm sorry. I, I'm very concerned about that. Yeah.
I don't even know whether the right number for the community foundation is 200,000 or 500 million or four million. Cause I don't, I don't have a good sense for who was really hurt by this. Take a look at the matrix that Kevin's going to take us through. I think it's, I think it's really, it's, it's really done well, quite frankly. Because if you, if you look at the stuff that's under community needs, these things all generated different needs in our community as a result of COVID. We need, we need more daycare as a result of people being home. Uh, and, and that's going to drive and people going back to work is going to be a problem and people not being able to commute and the lack of transportation that it, you know, who knows where the transportation system is going to go here, right? I mean, it's a catastrophe right now. Nobody can get to work on 95. Nobody's riding the train. I was at the train station six o'clock this morning. There were 10 cars there, you know, and a train just left at 6:16. Uh, it's, it, nobody, nobody has taken that train. But if you look at these, these are all generated this way, you know? I mean, I think the wave anything is terrific, you know? Uh, Wavney is a great resource for expanding telehealth across the community. It's their, it's their business. You know, and having what the visiting nurses, et cetera. That's what their business is becoming more and more. And the, the, you know, going to everybody's house with it, they've expanded over the last, the last seven or eight years or whatever. I think these things are, are really, they, they really go with what I think of as the, the point of this money that we're getting is to change our community and expand our community, the areas where we think it needs to be expanded. I, I think there's some things that are missing here, but when you look at, when you look at the governmental needs, these are much more, let's just fund what we, what we wanted to do anyways. The rank, we want to do the rank. Okay. So let's use part of this to fund the rank. Uh, you know, the, the new, the new, new Canadian Playhouse. We're, we're going to do that anyways.
Well, I'm not sure on any of those, but that's okay. It's like, I think this is, you know, people have different.
Not generated by COVID.
What?
The playoffs are not generated by COVID and the argument would be to get people coming into town to generate business here. It's important if we put money in the playoffs. So I get it, right? But it's not by COVID. I mean, it's just how do we, how, how do we think we're going to expand the economy in New Canaan? Uh, and I think that's a great thing that we ought to focus on because that'll help us, that'll help the, the town forward. But I just think the top half is different than the bottom half here.
Um, what, so do, do, do we want to like try to do parameters and then go through some of the comments that were put forward by Kevin? And then other, adding more in?
Yeah, I, I, I think, yeah, this, this, we can't, yeah, we can't go.
Yeah.
A line item, but a line item.
Can I just interrupt on that for a minute? Cause I have trouble looking at this because I don't personally know the places that were hurt. I mean, there needs to be some kind of macro analysis that says, look, these are the guys that were, went under. These are the guys that had a big problem, right? Now how are we going to address those guys? And does that take 6 million, 12 million or four million?
Well, and then you presuppose that just because they went on, I mean, that, that's assuming that the entity was, should have been going in an ongoing concern. I mean, things, things come in and out, right? You know, so just to have a.
Under in bankrupt. I just meant people that had a much harder time and have been unable to recover as quick. That's all. They, they, they need this help.
And. But, but again, you're assuming that exactly that entity that they did is very worthy and these are, they're tough judgment calls, right? I mean, just because somebody had a nonprofit is.
Take it out of nonprofit. I don't, I don't say it's restaurants, say it's whatever. I don't, I don't care. Who got hurt and, and are they coming back or not? Right? And I think there needs to be a macro analysis to put the framework around.
Yeah. That's right.
And I don't know who's going to do it. That's, that's my question is who's going to do it? Because we're kind of, we're kind of deciding this in a void.
Well, we, and we can also, like you, you were considering like doing it in chunks. I think what I was hearing, go a third, a third, a third, just as maybe.
One parameter that we have is, I mean, just one that we've already decided is general fund. If, if, if money does go into the general fund, it needs to be.
Earmarked.
It needs to be earmarked, period. And that, that's a guideline that we're going to, we can.
Don't be too hostile with the general fund. It's good for us.
I, I love, I, I love the general fund. It's $29 million. It feels like it's going back to the taxpayer. So which is in, we could argue not in the spirit of the legislation of, of the, of this, the way this money should be allocated, but I'm happy to be in the minority and, and agree that, if we all agree, as long as it's earmarked. Cause I think to Christina's point, once it goes in, we don't, we don't have a.
No, it can be spent many different ways.
And we don't have a say on it again.
When it does go in general fund, it shows that we wanted it for the purpose of making sure that it's used for.
Correct.
Well, we didn't end up where the guys that wrote this law thought the kind of towns were going to end up. If you, if you were short revenue, you should have been short. And we were short revenue, but we were long in other, other places. So we didn't end up where they were intending this when they said, so you can put this right where you want.
Yeah. Co- COVID didn't go away a lot of way people thought, right? I mean, you had K recovery, people here did great. Other people got crushed down.
And that's my only point. The people that got crushed are the people we ought to be looking at, whoever they are. And as I said, I don't know, but I hope that the Board of Finance knows when they start coming up.
This, this is not easy.
No, it's not.
When you started your process, I talked about one-time expenses.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. No, no. And I, and I own, those are, that was to stimulate conversation. I wrote those down on my own.
Why don't we go through them and, and just say a yea or nay on how people feel about it? Cause I mean, they either, you know, appear in our.
And we have another one too, which is if, if we do, if money is allocated to the general fund, that, 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 that's another one that I'll add. But going back to what I said earlier, should be non-recurring.
Absolutely.
In other words, we should not lead to further budgetary support. So we're not trying to fund people's operations. I think it's, if we're going to.
Yeah, not from their operations, but also got to think if the capital, if a capital contribution, contribution we're doing is towards something, that could down the road cause an additional expense. Like the ice rinks, an example, okay? Maybe it helps to get going. You know, it, it, and I'm not saying it's good or bad, right? But it could be to have a, an ice rink that, you know, you're going to have to have some park and rec money going on a go-forward basis. I, I've been involved with ice rink financings. They're tough. Unless you have like a, a hundred percent capital funded.
But look at, look at the way the pool got started. There was a lot of arguments about it.
I've just done ice rinks. So they're, they're very hard with that enormous capital contribution.
Yeah. Westport is very successful.
Is Restport up there permanently or just in the winter?
It's just in the winter.
Okay. So now recurring.
Yep.
Where everyone agrees on that.
Uh, this one, I think we all agree on infrastructure project. Yep.
That's going to become a permanent.
Yeah.
Right.
So we're kind of explaining one of the schools. And he, he, he thinks that's that important. He wanted to get kickstarted this year. But we're going to have the application of 90,000.
But is that something the town would take on?
Yeah, it'll come through.
Okay. Okay. So we don't have to consider that.
Using example of what.
Yeah.
No, the, no, it's important education.
So that's. Okay, okay. It's parameters have holes in them.
So when you say benefit all residents.
Uh, yeah. Infrastructure should, yeah, that.
So the ice rinks doesn't do that.
Sure does.
Sure. But it's an asset in the community.
Yes. Yes. And it's open to all. It's not like a private club. It's not restrictive in any way.
Yeah. I mean, yes, all, but.
I just didn't know how tight you're making that definition.
Library, all residents, ice rink, Wavney, anything in Wavney is for the, for, for all residents.
Police department, the generator.
Yep.
That, that the capital, the generator.
Public safety would be for all residents.
Yeah. I mean.
Now, now my only, my only question that I had earlier, or one of my points was was the email that we got from, from the chief around the car theft. That's been going on for years. Why, why is that? That is public safety. That should be, that's where the taxpayers' dollars should come in. Should, should these funds go to that? I don't know. It's up for debate. I just think. I don't know.
We, we have a police department to get built. Okay. And, and that's, that's a big number. And you know, you, you could, you could take some of, I mean, what is it? 3 million bucks is a revenue replacement, lost revenue. You could say, I'm just throwing stuff. You could say, all right, we have 5.8 come in, 3 million. It's a very easy account, you know, from a accounting standpoint, we can say we, we replace revenues. You guys could say, we want those money to do these capital projects. You could go to the general fund, but it's not.
That's earmarking.
Right, exactly. But you could do, you could do it for, you know, a part of the police department. You could do it for the generator. You could do it for, you know, maybe some of the, the, the flex trails for Wavney. And you know, there is something about enhancing on the community and stuff like that. So I mean, that's a way and those things, everybody, everyone benefits from. I'm not sure on this one, but.
This gets back to Kevin's point though, is it needs to be COVID related and all of a sudden become less and less COVID.
But yeah, these are things that the town needed 10 years ago.
But, but if, if you're replacing your revenue, that is direct COVID. Just because we got lucky and our conveyance fees were higher doesn't mean we wouldn't have been in a hole. Of course, we had the general fund would help us out, but, um, we, we would have been a hole if the conveyance fees weren't so hard and a couple other, you know, we, we had some expenses went down and stuff like that. So we would have been a hole. So it is with the spirit of the law, you're replacing your revenues. And then from a town perspective, I think you're using them in a way that is constructive to the whole town and to the taxpayers going forward. Cause these will be capital expenses that we have. Absolutely. And so at least you can offset some of the costs.
And I would say it's probably easiest to identify those costs. As you know, you can very easily quantify them and, and, you know, report those numbers. And I think that that would pass easy scrutiny as to, you know, whether some of these other things might pass. They may not pass as easily. And I think, you know, if we take the low hanging fruit and take care of that first, then we can, we can use and, you know, move those assets where they need to be to some of these capital costs.
You know, back in the turn of the century, New Canaan put an effort forward to beautify the town. And we're at a crossroad where we are getting more tourism and more residents moving in with younger families. And there are things around town that we don't have and nobody's planning for it. And I think we should put a certain amount of effort into replanting trees, putting benches, doing it so that it's, it's more welcoming and it's there for people to enjoy. And I think that with a good landscaping plan, we can come up with something, but it's something that we don't even have put forth as a possibility. And I think it needs to be part of the thinking process. What do we do to improve some of the things around New Canaan that are viewed and in part of everyday life, like going around town? Do we set some money aside for, uh, promotion? Or for example, the email that we received from the Board of Realtors, should we fund, um, or offset some of the expenses? Because I strongly believe that New Canaan would not have been the real estate magnet that it is now if it wasn't for their advertising and reaching out to the community. And the town has, and, and the town, yes, but nobody knows about it if the word isn't out.
Right. Well, I mean, is it, can we given time and.
Yeah.
Now we're going into specific items. Maybe Kevin could just touch on the, the, what the Board of Select discussed last week. And obviously why you put them here essentially, because that was, uh, the, the form that was occurred.
So as far as economic development, economic. They'll generally look at waste. What can we do? And, um, no question to play out both. The operator decided to get some release. Nice partners. They, they left all their very expensive work, which allows us to go back to the business, but we unfortunately, as a business building, we have 88 clients who are going to study that. So we can, with an operation, I think this can't be opened until we.
Those existed before COVID.
And, you know, we, we have $85,000 that we collected for rent.
But we, we did, you know, when, when you brought forth the playhouse and for the appropriation to fix the roof, which obviously, but we, at least in the Board of Finance, we, we really said and said, wait a minute. We need to really understand if there is a financial, how it, how it scopes out. We don't have, you know, something that, that justifies reopening a playhouse. Every other movie theater is closing. So why do we think that our model is going to be different? And we don't have the analysis yet. And we, we, from the Board of Finance, we said that very clearly, it's a, all right, fix the roof. But we feel we really need an analysis going forward. Yeah. But, but not necessarily from like the, the version of bow tie, but like, does it really work? Yeah. Okay.
So who's doing?
Yeah. But, but again, if you work with the operator, the operator is not a non-biased party, right? They want to open it up. We, we need to have a, a, a
Doesn't necessarily.
Unbiased analysis. Yeah.
I think also.
When we start discussing that, you understand.
Yeah.
But who, who, who's weak?
Yeah. No, we're not, we're not. But is it, so, so we shouldn't even ask you what, you know? I mean, the only number I'd ask is, you know, because I'm sure Ritual is, you know, why $1 million for the community foundation? Yeah. How did you come to that number? Or is there, you know, or is that an ask or?
Well, we, we actually asked Laura Fabian. Many dollars was sufficient. And she said, yeah, I think we ought to.
Right. Right. So we don't.
I'd actually like to know, you know, a little bit more about some of these things that are, that are on the list. I mean, what is the open space fund? Right. And, and every single, and every single year, and we haven't funded it because we haven't felt that it, you know, met the priority of other things that, you know, need to be done.
So is that something for the land trust or for the town?
We did a joint transaction with the state. Silvermine.
Yeah.
By ground parks.
Okay.
But we have, we need something to work with.
Okay. But it would be, it would be held by the town. Okay.
And so you're saying that the funds that we have in the general fund aren't sufficient enough to, if those opportunities arise, you know, use those funds as opposed to taking monies out and putting it in a designated, uh, reserve fund.
Because that's how we did it last, with the, the last acquisition. We just took it out of the general fund. It was like, it was, I think it was 75, 25 and we're like, terrific. Great. So it sounds like we don't have the resources to do that if something presents itself. So.
Well, yeah, the ice rink was one we thought, I mean, in order to get into operation, people are looking for activities to do. They had to put them out. Parking lot and winterizing the. But they've got to. Raise money to be able to scrap.
So the ice rink, um, project, projected one hundred thousand dollars would be basic. Right.
Each one of these was designed to be a public private partnerships.
Right.
You're gonna match.
But this is not to refurbish the bathrooms and make them winterized. That's not, okay.
Which bathroom do you speak about?
The potting shed.
And actually, I mean, you know, each of these will embellish more. I'm really envisioning where this process is going.
Yeah.
It makes sense, but we're selecting. For the definitive.
Okay.
Matrix that we're requesting the incorporation and then have word finance, we get a function on that with, with more specifics. These are, these are collection of ideas which need to be developed. Doesn't have to all be decided.
By November, okay.
But, but and it also is not a definite, this is what you put together as a suggestion, it's open for.
And some, some stuff should move, we should move as quickly as possible. I mean, that, the modernization of equipment, I mean, that.
I think it's important.
I mean, that, that's a must and it.
A lot about the enhanced town, but we were never, you know, haven't really moved on yet. Like the less day round, the park, the park is really being really used. Now that we have the, uh, review. It's a very, kind of, kind of connection to the, first of, it's a highly, highly used area to help people get around that part of it.
Is that, I don't believe, was that in the capital budget before?
Never.
Okay, so this is again, and I'm just gonna say, it's. But we never put it in the capital budget, so it's kind of jumping, jump.
Lots of times, you know, most of the capital budget, I think we need. Nice to have. And these are kind of things we thought about that would be against the community. And we did that in partnership with the private fundraising effort. That would be a nice add.
Great.
We kind of went quickly over Channel seventy nine. Is forty thousand enough?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Discover, you know, we still have this, we are.
Yeah. And so that's why I was questioning whether or not forty really is. Pardon me?
And, and looking down the road and saying. It's gonna, okay, that's, that's.
That's a good one.
And it's been priceless through COVID to have it.
We, the park conservancy is going, it's just about the bigger capital plan. We have never authorized matching funds. We've done some of that matching the trails, but given the, uh, their, their board and. Just like we have with the athletic foundation. Put money in the budget to match their, their plans. We, we need to make more.
But that would be a reoccurring expense.
It, it could be, but I think they could put in the capital budget on it, go forward.
So.
But they have projects they'd like to start and, and, you know, the short do what we've done too is, you know, we're, we're responsible for the landscape. So when they're doing it. Garden project, we're redoing the walls. So it's not as though we have to spend money. It's just that we, we really have to.
Are the bathrooms near the playhouse something that the town is going to pay for? Or is that going to come out of the wave?
I, I think the design, the design was in the budget, it's in the budget. I'm, I'm not, at least part of it is. It's a multi-year plan, but it's part of it's in.
And how does? I say their brand new proposal from, from the powerhouse for a million bucks.
Well, that's quite honestly, I mean.
You can, anybody can't spend.
They appreciate the fact that they presented us that they, they're gonna start a capital game that can't pay for a million dollars. And like everything else, we should be matching, moving something towards somebody else's product, not replacing.
That's a big ask.
Well. You, you never know. It is open to everyone and, and.
But it is something that's also, you know, a lot of the members of it are in a broader community, which isn't bad, right?
I know that. I'm not proposing it for this. I'm just saying that you, when I was responding to Kevin, you don't know what.
Since we lost the parking revenue, we lost the opportunity. There's a formula. Existence for like eight or ten years, that, that a part of the parking revenues every year going to the parking lot. So that we have the money to. Maybe the parking lot for me. So calculate what's going into the parking lot every year, best every year at one fifty is what we lost the opportunity. Were in last year. So we thought that's something that, you know, it's a legitimate.
I was gonna say, that's a legitimate.
Right. Linda, is that, is that within the estimated loss revenue of three point one million? Okay.
But part of that revenue would have gone into parking.
Not yet. I'm just.
So then, so that, you know, yeah, the one area where I think we still haven't, I have the sense, like, how can we help downtown? How can we help businesses?
That was gonna be my question. Kevin, what do you think's missing?
Well, yeah, I, I just, it's, it's a tough one. Especially retail, like, you know, restaurants are doing fine. A lot of businesses are doing fine. And, but how do you help downtown? That's something everybody else is thinking about, coming up with.
If you divide it up, well, let's get out the subject, keep going through.
We had meetings with landlords and stuff, asking these questions, what can we do to help? And we, we can't, uh, maybe Tucker. We can't really rebate taxes, but.
It's a very valid question. Merchants is something, you know, how to help the downtown businesses, specifically the retailers is something that we've struggled with. As Kevin said, we've had some meetings with the landlords and, and some key tenants to talk about, you know, are there things that we could do? And we've gotten a lot of good ideas, none of which really requires funds per se. It's more some policies that we could put in place. I mean, parking is something that continually comes up as an issue, but it was more things about how we could structure. The planning and zoning process to make it a little bit of a smoother process to understand it. And T DAC is working on a business development guide as we speak. That will be given to every commercial real estate broker in town that they could say, you know, here's what, when you're thinking of opening a business from A to Z. Here are all the steps and here are the contact info. So those are things that we're working on as part parcel of this, but it wasn't really a discussion. But how do you help the individual businesses? That's why we kept coming back to the playhouse being something that if the theater were open and being very active with a robust program. That would support the businesses per se. The rising tide floats all boats kind of theory.
How much of the business is non-retail business? Stuff like, stuff like the financial funds and stuff that are in the second floors. Is, is that significant? I have no, I have no, I just didn't know what range of capital was.
It's, it's actually something we don't have a lot of data on. That's secondarily kind of strong.
Is, are we, are we doing anything to, to quiz any of these folks and find out if there's anything we can do to help? Uh, if you divide it up into different pieces, are we doing anything for, for improving communications in, in, in New Canaan? You know, I mean, communications and, and the network and, and internet, we're stuck, we're stuck with what we've got there and we're stuck with the cable.
We've done a lot of work on that.
And, and is there some of this money we should use to move that along?
Hey, John.
I've asked Home and Towers whether we could participate, help them sell towers faster. They don't want to fit their model test, a lot of that. But, and also we. Internet. Our, our strategy, we decided is to make L T S be a better provider, because they have the ability. And we need to continue to work with them to be a better provider.
And that's one specific identified. Objective is to increase the broadband and structure of wires to a broadband.
Right. How do we get, how do we get to five G? How do we, how do we not be handcuffed to, to one, one monopoly?
And that actually is an issue that. Became really manifest during, during COVID.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, when I sit on statewide commissions on analyses of what impacted COVID have. You know, on various populations across the state, one thing that just time after time after time was mentioned is the lack of connectivity. Uh, and you get people way in the Northwest corner of Connecticut and they had no clue what was happening across the state. You know, or how, how they could connect with the various service organizations that were delivering meals or, you know, just things like that. And so it really, really has, and I don't know how far the conversation has, has advanced at the state level. Is that there be a statewide broadband provision? So that you can't have some state, some towns that are haves and have nots, you know, being able to. Respond to that, that identified need. Uh, but, but as something, at least in our town, I would think that that would be. Uh, certainly something that everybody would benefit from.
Working from home really has gotten a boost out of COVID, right?
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Have the bandwidth and we don't have, have the top of the line, not just, not just okay bandwidth, but bandwidth that's better than Westport and better than, than, than the rest of them. We, that, that's a, that's a problem. That is a problem. And the same thing on, the same thing on transportation. I mean, we are just twenty minutes away relative to those guys, twenty minutes more away, right? And is there anything we can do in here that can move transportation along? And I know I had a, I had a discussion with, with Tucker on this, or at least a back and forth is, is. Again, going back to Rangefree for a minute, we tried to hire employees out of New York and they can't get here before eight thirty in the morning on the train. They just can't beat, but it, right? Uh, and that's just unacceptable to try and have a, a non-restaurant place here. If you can't get people here before eight thirty in the morning. Right? And so is there some kind of transportation that we could put in place that this would be a starting point? And say, look, what we're gonna, we're gonna buy three vans and we're gonna drive them back and forth to Darien or something, right? On this schedule, and we're gonna pick them up at the high, or whatever it is, and see whether that helps at all, one way or another. Because we know we got a main line right down there. We just can't get to it. And, and we can only get to it once an hour. We can only get, and it takes us twenty minutes.
So two weeks, we had a meeting in this room with DOT officials with our four legislative representatives. Looking at those issues, you know, there's money set aside to study. They decided. Frequency of, of trains to main line and. In our discussion, we said, maybe it's really just a better, better north schedule. Because the same way you have probably getting up this morning, and they're probably.
Right.
And if you miss that by four twenty five, you're waiting six fifteen. That's not, that's not great service. But maybe the answer is to have answer stuff.
Yeah.
So there's, yeah, clearly, um, that's, that's something we would kind of work with.
And Kevin, it goes the other way because you can't get here from Bridgeport in less than two hours. You can't get to Bridgeport from here in less than two hours, right? And that's where a lot of people that could do service jobs up here live, right? Or in, in that area. There's no public transportation, right? And, and our, our competitors down on the, on the coast here all have it, right? Darien's got it, everybody's got it. Exactly. Exactly. I don't know. That's a good, that's a good one or a bad one. And then just continuing to go down the pace, the, the list here. We don't have any infant daycare in New Canaan except for the water.
No. We have.
We have.
The community.
No, that's not infant. Right.
Okay.
Is, is the why. They, 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 they are, they're working with their architects to look to reconfigure their space and expand the capacity. It's easier to expand than start a whole operation, although there's a couple that's looking to, to, uh, start a new daycare.
But should we, should, should we look at perhaps financing somebody to start a new, new daycare to expand the, the capacity?
That's, that's big log.
Would you step forward because they. They can, and they want to.
Kevin, is, is the, the number that you put here, is that for the capital? It's, it's the capital. It's the capital needs and the why to do that expansion, right? Not operating, right? Okay. And can I ask one question? The why is, it's open, it's regional why, right? So it's not like New Canaan, yeah, New Canaan kids don't get the first dib. I'm getting there, right? It's just, we're just providing a service to the general area of infant daycare. Okay, just make sure I understood it. Yeah.
Well, nobody has infants and then the towers and the hours of people run make it difficult for people to use them, right? Uh, because they start late, in early, et cetera. And that's why the why is so popular, because they start early and then late. So you can actually commute to New York and have your kids go to water.
Yep.
And then we need, you know, the form we had, a couple nonprofits came forward with specific proposals. Waybitt here actually had a more extended. They, they, they provide the school nurses and the public health nurses to the town local. They merged with the.
Visiting nurse.
Visiting nurses and hospice. Last year. So they feel like they can do the same thing for the part that they do for the. We really want to deal with our own public health and, but their, their idea of expanding. So telehealth services is something they were already in visiting nurses.
Is the town still doing that today, Kevin? Are we doing telehealth for the old? That's my, that's my question. Why doesn't, why doesn't Wade me take that? Why don't we put, get that over, Wade me? The, the telehealth.
Yeah, they have a specific proposal that they like to.
I know.
And is it telehealth or is it telemedicine? When it's.
Not wellness. You know, our, our, what you were servicing with our telewell, wellness is not a.
And it's, I know everybody goes on the exercise program or something. Um, so is it telemedicine that really?
They have capabilities now that they didn't have before they, they merged and they wanted to expand this.
And what's this? Um, I mean, I'm assuming there's backup information for everybody for all these asks. So, so what, what do they do? What is what do they do?
Some of these hours we can't function on, so I totally understand that. We have that. So we missed our, let's, let's plan to do some of them by November and then some of them are gonna require more work and more presentation.
But we, yeah, we don't need to vet these.
No, but you know, with everything that's listed here, there really isn't anything for the town per se to improve it. This is just going to different organizations outside of the open space fund.
Well, there's a million and a half that's going, like, under this is a million dollars. We're just saying the community foundation knows better than anybody else.
Not really, because the town has needs, like I said before, and we're not even listening.
Silver Hill Hospital has the ability to have a value of people, they do that with people. And then as soon as you know what the need is. A lot of people don't have insurance. They still need service. Prices. So then they start searching around for a wider, and Silver Hill Hospital generally has the, the. Have this ability to service people that they want to pay. So the idea was to have a fund that people can. And they're already, our most, Dr. Gerbert is already our. Started this two years ago, three years ago, with the police department. So we had a medical doctors and vice.
Right.
And so Dr. Gerbert, you know, was, was currently at that position. So he thought a more robust program to be able to provide the services for people in the neighborhood. If they have any, it's gonna be, they say. Sometimes it's needed for a week or two. And rather than having family struggles. And that's something we probably can embellish in terms of how, how it would work it out. Actually, perhaps boost, boost up, start a larger fund.
Yeah.
Which could be supported by regulation. It's a real need and we just. And actually, that's one of the concerns that we found about.
Do they participate with medic?
Do they participate with Medicare, Medicaid?
Most um at a certain level. Families are going to be that unsure.
Right. Okay.
So this this is, this falls under more the seed money number. Two fifty is not going to go very far on medical care and like nowhere.
Begin a fund.
But but where's the rest of the fund coming from?
Imagine, you know, have to inspire someone to create a fund with the community foundations, for example, and have them raise money so that we have an ongoing fund. This this started with a conversation with Paul Weihart.
Hmm.
About, you know, how can we address these families with the fund itself, crisis? And it really, you know, when you're facing the situation, you, you know, it's nice to have Silver Hospital be able to help you evaluate need, but then you gotta provide a provider.
Yeah.
And oftentimes, it'd be a real累.
But Silver Hill is also, for lack of better words, first come, first served. They're going to be serving people outside of this community. They always do.
But this could be exciting. They're a resource that they they do serve a lot of charity care. That's just Wade, they're sorry. But um but this would inspire that to have a more focused ability to say, we will take care of you. We probably we be your immediate leads and then it's really.
So this brings up a parameter as to whether or not you wanna support projects that require additional philanthropic
Right.
funding.
Right.
To just get off the ground. I mean, that again is a parameter that we could or should consider.
So, all right, so you've put forward this initial uh list of things to think about, obviously talking to a lot of people, right? Um and it's from from where we sit here. How do we go forward to modify, suggest additional?
I I I think I think Kevin said we gotta do the normal budget process. I think we should.
We need that we all got it once. I mean, we perhaps ought to try to get some things that are immediate need.
That's fair.
And bring it forward.
And then think and maybe better ideas come later.
Series of special requests, you know, we don't spend all this money.
Hmm.
It's six months, we got three years to spend. Some of these require further work, obviously, but uh we gotta we gotta get get on with the summer.
We should have a decision. Parameters that that we can, if it's over a three-year period, so that we hold true to those parameters, that I think is ultimately the goal that we should.
Well, I think every single one of these things requires supporting documentation and and
Well, that that.
rationale.
Right, and that that could be a.
Yeah, somewhere easier than others.
Some of the, I mean, these projects have got to get underway with, I think, doesn't wave any Life Care Network as has a proposal, written proposal. Uh I think I've read that.
Um, yeah, that.
You know, but I don't I don't see written proposals for any of the others.
A million, a million dollars to the Canadian Foundation. What exactly are you supporting that was impacted by COVID?
We got alarm patterns and it's we're trying to be very helpful.
Yes.
Their process.
That's what we know.
Understand. If they knew they had the ability to address COVID days and explain to nonprofits that you can identify COVID days in your grant application process.
Yes.
And and they then will study that and understand what they're what they're looking for.
I think that's something that will help more than we have.
So their process begins in November, December, January, and then they have their grant grant committees to go out and interview. Very, very detailed process.
I would like to see each of the um items listed or the organizations listed come up with a formal proposal as to what they would do with the money. That's in there, you mean, on the Community Foundation?
No, no.
No, on the list. Oh, that's that's kind of what I was saying.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
There needs to be a whole grant process. In fact, we should uh develop a format of the questions, the need to be.
Yeah.
That's the next step. Yeah, addressed.
I mean, look, a couple of these I think are easy. NCTV, that's easy.
Right, right, and it.
Parking fund, that's legit, right?
Right, but we don't, um, I mean, they're gonna come through the process and 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 they'll be easy, I imagine, for for various bodies to to move through. But I think, you know, we need to set guidelines and I think I think we've come up with a bunch of them.
But the guidelines have to be even for everybody, whether or not we'd like.
Of course, I mean, we we want it to be in the spirit of the legislation.
Exactly.
And if you're gonna give a million dollars to New Canaan Community Foundation, how is this benefiting those that are in need or those affected by COVID?
Because if we get audited, we need the paper trail.
Yeah, so we don't.
And and to that.
You want to hear it first before we agree, because maybe maybe a million isn't enough. I don't know, maybe too much.
And to that point, I mean, New Canaan Community Foundation obviously gives to a lot of organizations that give outside the community, and we know that there's ARPA funds going to everybody. So we we should be kind of honed in and focused on how it has impacted us here locally and maybe kind of limit their scope of of the the ones that the organizations that they're looking at are the ones that are actually going to serve as the residents of our town, because other towns get, you know.
Their own, access to their own.
Hundreds of millions. So we got we got our five. We're five point eight.
So maybe not keep Kevin and Tucker here any longer. Well, and Linda, sorry, Linda. You know, maybe maybe we need to draft the parameters that we discussed or guidelines and
Okay.
um as opposed to sitting here and deliberating over.
But I also think we should also um have, you know, from the Board of Finance, from you guys, additional, specific projects, you know, this is a great starting point, you know, but we should get a more um holistic list.
Right.
Yeah, so.
What's what's missing and how do we look at? Right, the bit that supports downtown or the business community in in New Canaan is clearly missing and.
Is there anything we can do money-wise in for, uh, I know you started talking about this, just the whole internet connectivity issues. There's, you said that they want to do their own deal.
The Technology Advisory Commission that's studying.
Yeah.
What's wrong with LTs?
Right.
And they're absolutely against the idea of
Right.
Why?
Right. They're just so frustrating. Yeah.
And uh so we're working on trying to look hammering LTs to be better, which is and frontier, frontier coverage, you know, should be a part of the tablet. If that's service, that's a full package. So we have this inspired, we need to make it do that. We have to be at Verizon Thursday with the right, why is their service preference bad? So we're working on these things that they're they're tough companies to deal with in terms of one, being transparent, and two, you know, just urging them to get better.
But you know, it's sort of what happened with the Metro North. They can tell you, you know, we have restored services and then you find out they haven't. I mean.
They have it in their view. And it's probably okay. It's I mean. If, you know, the decisions they make, I mean.
They're bigger.
I didn't realize they were gonna have all these additional stops because it serves their needs and they want to computer, but it's still one-seat service. So it's, and I I really think they're thinking, if things get back to normal. They don't do schedule change very often, because it's very complicated with every train, everything else. So when they, like, every six months, right?
Mm-hmm.
And uh so
It's a minute here.
Hopefully, six, six months from now, we'll be able to have them go back to the normal train. That's really, because the five-thirty train is not not express.
Right. There's very few express right now.
Yeah, but they're also probably they're ten minutes late, they're ten minutes late to that connection. It's not what people, the customer. You gotta, I I really respect the fact that Metro North gave us what we needed.
Yep.
Even though it's not perfect.
It's not perfect, but not everyone's going in five times a week. You're going in two times a week. That's like, okay. I can live with it. I can live with this if I'm doing two times.
The eighty-two percent didn't include the ride home, so that's the.
And they're and they're only charging you off-peak fare for peak hour trains, just that way.
I'd rather have my hundred percent.
That, to me, has more of a COVID-related um nature to it. You know, people's transportation and accessibility to their work than an open space fund. I mean.
Well, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
They stay up. And we only have six million, maybe, so we can't, we have, we have to figure what we can do, what we can, how we can deploy six million in the most, uh, leverage is the most for everybody, right?
Impactful.
Right. And the biggest impact.
In the most impactful way.
Well, that that that, so that was my point. I didn't want to.
Like, super, he agreed to do the kids' expenses out of his money like that.
Right, right.
Things you want to, some things you want to do.
And if and if you're leaving that out of your budget just to meet guidance, that's that's the problem, not. Yeah, so.
So I I think the the idea is that we don't have to do this all right now, but if there are things here, like.
I would like to bring some things in over the.
Exactly, like, I think that the NCTV is is perfect. I I I put them, I think the conservancy is great because what everybody is waiting during, I mean, everybody used it.
Aren't you on the board?
No.
Okay.
No, no, I'm not conflicted.
Okay.
No, I'm not conflicted.
It is two fifty. Too much, not enough.
It's something we don't have to do.
We don't, we don't have to, we don't.
We don't support. Why don't we design a forum to start?
You can see the work they've done for the first five years.
That's amazing.
Once we're done with the meeting.
We really.
Yeah.
I almost think that that the government needs category is is um almost without question.
Uh, you mean?
Acceptable.
Three million.
I don't.
But what would you not do?
I'm sorry, we're.
Oh, the ice cream.
The ice cream at the Playhouse. The other ones are.
Well, the Playhouse needs some more background. I mean.
A lot.
What is the future of of, you know?
It's a big issue, yeah. And and and, no, yeah.
They all have to be on the same tribe.
Exactly.
Right, and that that's
Okay.
Important to understand.
Okay. Um, what's the time that, just once it may be more more imminent, how about the YMCA? Where are they in terms of uh?
They're got architect working.
So they'd be ready to go sometime soon, right? So that's
Yeah.
That's um.
Decisions as to what they're what they're trying to work for.
Mm-hmm.
They're not going to expand their building again, are they?
They're re 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 re.
Realize the interior.
Yeah.
Because in the past forty years, they have promised that they're not going to expand again and.
Just internal, just internal. No, no. No, no, they're they're t stuck in internal right now.
That was why I asked the question. Listen to the question. The answer is.
Yeah.
I think Wade and Care should come and and make a better.
Yep.
Make a pitch for what they're
Mm-hmm.
Telemedicine.
All right, so we okay, you know, who who should be, it's a big S, you should ask them to present.
Okay, so developing a grant framework probably can secure um
It's a one pager.
From a number of organizations that have grant, granting probably is on Google, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about the flexi they they
We're talking like the same type of uh thing that is in our win.
Yeah.
Successful early.
I think.
How about Arnold? He can match it.
Compared to the, well, I think that neighborhood would be interested in, just like they are for the first of that they would probably would prefer to raise that money.
But you know, Christian, I think I think your your point you made about just like the the basic town, some of the basic town needs, you know, I was thinking, you know, we we got a little bit more money in for the tree fund last year in the budget. It's not just planting new trees. We got a lot of trees dying. We need, we need, it's like almost a safety thing. And so, you know, that may be something, and and I don't even know if you can get people to do it right now because they're so so short of of people to do stuff, but but, you know, money, I I think Westport's doing that. They're putting money into like, you know, tree and and that, you know, making things safer. That may be a a good use of funds and it's a one-time thing.
But we can create a fund where matching contributions from the town or businesses can contribute to expand it even further.
Yeah, they'd probably do new trees. They probably want to pay to take them down.
Light trees, light trees, once you break into season, then they're trying to get rid of them.
Yeah.
We don't have much to treat.
You don't have one, I'm sorry?
Much of the tree planting program.
No, and and we need more tree trimming. We just do, you know.
Well, if you ever source it, what we do. Take that one. They die or.
Yeah, that's on it.
There's probably a million more, anyway.
Okay, all right. So a so a game plan going for you. Uh, we're we're like the subcommittees, right? So we're gonna um put together the the parameters.
It's parameters that we all agreed on.
Okay, and we just shouldn't, and then.
I think we're, you know, other other ideas that came forth were, you know, if if we need to hear from more people, we need to probably have some guidance or some questions that need to be asked if you're going to be asking for money.
But but should we also, um, I mean, do we have a, do we have a comprehensive list of the ask? See, I think we need to make that comprehensive, like, so we have what you put forth is a starting point, right? And then we should, uh, you know, from our side in Board of Finance and from you guys in Town Council, we should collect other thoughts, you know, fitting with the parameter of where where potentially could be well-deployed, you know, obviously, nobody's committing on it, but just like get a more comprehensive list and then, and again, none of it has to be done. We don't have to spend it all right away, but can, and then maybe develop a priority list from that.
Why don't, why don't we start with a grant list and just put a preliminary list out for people to submit? So we have it in writing and we have an idea of what they're they're looking for. It's not just give me money. It's what is the money going to be used for and is it really going to be enough to cover it or how much of it are you needing to get it started? So if we put a preliminary grant application and welcome the public to submit it, I think we would be ahead of the game than us trying to just guess. Let me put together a um really rough. A preliminary grant? Right.
For.
For um what a uh grant request would have to answer, what what questions. And then we would give it to the press and have them. And we all can, you know, opine on it and so that we've got apples and apples as we are evaluating people. We know who to contact, what they're asking for, how many people they expect to reach. You know.
Yeah, how are you impacted by COVID?
How are you impacted by COVID, right? So let me, let me see if I can.
I I would say that I think the risk on that is that you, I think we we gotta be careful, because I think we run the risk of three years from now going, where the hell all that money went? It just fittered away versus some bigger. I mean, we may have some bigger ticket items. There's a couple of big ones in here. You know, I would say I, you know, whether we want to offset the P and Z expense for the library, that's a big one. I don't think anyone's from the community is going to come out with that. So I think I I I worry that, I worry that thirty here, twenty here, whatever, but it doesn't.
I mean, that, okay, but that that's probably where the debate is.
Okay.
I think there's a couple more chunks.
Yeah, and I don't.
Come more chunks of. Oh, yeah, but I, but but before people start requesting money, how about if we have a format that they requested?
Now that I'm talking about grant applications, we've been going up about.
Right, right.
What does that mean? You mean, government? No. Okay, okay.
Yeah, 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 the big digit. So I don't know.
I mean, at the end of the day, we don't know how much is going to be available for the general fund, I mean, at the end of the day, we don't know how much is going to be available for the general fund, but we'll find, you know.
So should we schedule a follow-up meeting and in the meantime, look at other possibilities and analyze and do some study?
Well, I think one of the things John wanted to have was a public hearing of the town council, you know, town council have a public hearing on the matter.
Okay.
Doesn't really make much sense to have that. Before, uh, you know.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I was going to say we, we should have that meeting. I thought, you know, we, we obviously weren't going to have it before. We had input.
I think what is like a, or some specific discussion preparation request.
In addition to this. Part of this, but you may.
That are coming sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Right, but we should hear from areas where we have.
So then let's schedule a public hearing.
No, 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 that was, that is what I said right from the get-go, that the timeline is to have a public, uh, meeting, a special meeting in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, maybe the, a day after a regular town council meeting or?
Well, we know.
We don't have to.
We'll send it. We'll figure it out. There's only four of us here. And we have to get everyone.
What? Six, yeah.
Oh, that's right, for the, for the referendum. Right, that's the, the fifth of October.
Yeah.
So we could technically, or we could even have it after. It'll be a ten, a ten-minute meeting.
Why don't we just schedule it then?
Yeah.
No, we, we had, it's already on the calendar.
You already have.
We already had that date.
I know, so let's just schedule the next Tuesday.
No, I wasn't talking, I wasn't talking about our next meeting, no. It's like the twentieth, okay.
Why?
That's going to be a very long meeting. A public hearing and then the regular meeting of town council?
What else?
What else we don't?
We have no idea what else.
Look at how long.
You'll come up with something. Why don't we just do it on the fifth? We got to get going.
The sooner the better.
All we have to do is set a date.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's going to take ten minutes.
Right, but we, we can use that date, which you have as a marker for that meeting. If it doesn't pan out, we can have, that was Tucker's point, and yes, we can have a, a special meeting.
Yeah.
We'll just leave it.
Already on our calendars.
Okay.
All right.
So you're, you're doing the announcement for the public hearing, correct?
I'm sorry.
You will schedule the public hearing.
No, no, this would be the.
No, the town council.
Okay, well, then you get to John, right? Okay.
John just suggested that we move on it, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Oh, motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.